In accordance with Executive Order N-2920, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors meetings are being held virtually. You can participate via the Zoom call-in phone number, which is located on your screen and on the front of the agenda. And Ryan, would you please do roll call?
Thank you, Chair. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Ten-four.
And Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
And Supervisor Wilson is absent today.
All righty, thank you. So we will move on with the flag salute. And Ryan, if you want to bring up the flag, that'd be great. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Ryan. Like I said, I'm really looking forward to when we can be in the room and hear everybody at the same time on that one. So just a little heads up for those of you who would like to call in and make comment today. When the item comes up you want to speak to, turn off your TV volume so you don't get confused because there is a time delay, and call in and press star nine when you want to raise your hand. And then when it's your turn to speak, we'll ask you to press star six to unmute. Once again, there is a time delay, so don't wait till the last minute if you want to call. And so at this point, we still have the strict three-minute rule, and that means you have two and a half minutes, and then at the last thirty seconds, you will hear a tone, which normally I'd have ready, but I don't at the moment, and that'll tell you you have thirty seconds left. So with that, we will move on to the next piece. Modifications to the agenda and CIO Nielsen, do you have any modifications?
Good morning, Chair Bass. Supervisor Bushnell would like to pull item D3 for discussion.
All right. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar minus item D3?
I would move approval minus D3.
There a second? Supervisor Bushnell, I think that was a second?
I'll second.
And at this point, we will go out to public comment once I actually can find my participant thingy bobber here. And this is the time, if you wish to make comment on the item, I do understand Supervisor Wilson mentioned that there may be some folks on the line to speak to the Juneteenth proclamation, so this would now be the time for you to press star nine to raise your hand. And we have... Ryan, help me, I can't. Ah ha, there we go. So in the attendee queue, currently we have no one with their hand raised on the consent calendar. So we'll wait just a moment. And... All right, there are no hands up, so we will return to the board. Are there any board members you'd like to make comment on any of the other items on the consent calendar? All right. Ryan, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Chair, thank you. Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Thank you, passes four oh.
Okay, so we'll move on to the public comment on items that are not on the agenda. And again, this is time for members of the public to speak on items that are not officially on the agenda. You'll have three minutes, and the board will have no discussion on those items. And once again, we'll go to the public, and we do have one hand raised, and so zero one five one, just press star six to unmute. Dottie?
Morning, Dottie Russell here. Calling to talk about how to make sure that Southern Humboldt has access to the Board of Supervisors meetings once they are back in session at the courthouse. So we've proven over the last many months that Zoom does work. There can be more participation than sometimes from outlying areas and unincorporated areas. So it'll be nice to implement the Zoom as well as the in-person meetings at the courthouse. I think it's really important to do that. It certainly seems like it would be a lot easier for the supervisors if we did the Zoom connected with the in-person than to rotate it into all the outlying areas as well, because that's really problematic, takes a lot of time, and kind of messes up a routine that's going already. So I'd like to obviously propose that we have that in the works and that in the next month or hopefully in a month, find out what the cost would be and then figure out if we need to apply for a grant so that you have the money to cover the cost of doing Zoom and in-person at the Board of Supervisors meeting. So I hope we can all rally, be on the same page on that, because it's really necessary, and there's a lot of things that are uncovered and not even noticed in the outlying areas if we're not part of the supervisors' meeting. So thank you very much, and I hope you have a great day.
Thank you, Dottie. And there are no other hands up, so we will then go back to the board. And we'll move on to the items pulled from consent, and Supervisor Bushnell pulled item D3, so I'll hand this over to you.
Thank you, Chair Bass. Through the chair, I would just like to thank the Fortuna Fire Commission. We had an empty spot on the seat, and I want to also recognize Dave Nicholson and what he meant to the Fortuna Fire District. They did interviews with me present, and they made their choice, and they picked Glenn Senestro, which I think will be a great addition to the Fortuna Fire Commission Board. Glenn is on our call right now, and I just wanted to thank him and congratulate him and am looking forward to his participation with the Fortuna Fire District. So Glenn, I thank you for being willing and stepping out of a comfort zone, I think, for you, and welcome to the Fortuna Fire Commission.
Thank you, Supervisor Bushnell. And I don't know, Glenn, if you are on. Oh, you are on. I see a big visual. It must be you. Would you like to add something?
Yeah, I just, I appreciate the confidence in the board, hopefully the confidence in the board that they approve it for me to be on there, and I consider it an honor to be able to serve at that capacity. Obviously, everybody knows that the Fortuna Fire District is a very well-respected organization, so I'm just glad to be able to support.
Thank you, Glenn. Thanks for your willingness to volunteer. So at this time, we will go take this item out to public comment as well. And no hands up and no new numbers calling in, so I think we will just come back to the board on that. Any further comments on Mr. Senestro? Or it looks like they're ready to vote? Ryan? There you are.
Chair, we need a motion in a second.
So I would make a...
That's kind of what I meant, is part of ready to vote.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Glenn Senestro to the Fortuna Fire Commission Board.
Second.
Sorry about that, Ryan. You need to train me again, I guess. All right.
Yes, Chair, we will do a vote now. Thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Train her again means she was actually trained at what? Yes.
And Supervisor Bass?
Yes, and I will accept that.
Thank you, passes four oh.
Okay. So we're going to move on to matters initiated by board members, and Supervisor Madron is bringing this regarding consideration of joining the Cal Forest WRX Alliance, and I'll turn this over to you to share with the rest of us.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I believe that Scott Adair is on the line, and I've been working with Scott and other folks in economic development to organize this effort. So Scott, I imagine you probably have a short presentation you'd like to share with us?
Thank you, Supervisor Madron. I do have a short presentation that I can share with your board. My name is Scott Adair. I am the Division Director for the CIO's Office of Economic Development. The Cal Forest Works Initiative, which is before your board today as sponsored by Supervisor Madron, is akin to a community think tank, which is comprised of stakeholders who share an interest in the nexus between social and economic development and healthy forests. Current participants of the Cal Forest Works Alliance include the County of Humboldt's Office of Economic Development, the U.S. Forest Service, Six Rivers National Forest, Humboldt State University, CAL FIRE, and other private sector partners such as Golden State Natural Resources and also the North Fork Lumber Company have been included in previous Cal Forest Works conversations. Members of the Cal Forest Works Alliance meet on a regular basis to discuss best practices concerning fuels reduction, wildfire mitigation, carbon sequestration, and other forest management practices which can create jobs and economic prosperity through value-added forest products. The alliance members who initially formed to create the Cal Forest Works Alliance, and which was initially sponsored by the U.S. Forest Service, engaged with Supervisor Madron early during its initial formation to provide support and guidance for the initiative. Today, the Cal Forest Works Alliance is asking the county to memorialize its partnership with the Cal Forest Works Alliance and to appoint representation to formally serve the county's best interests in those conversations and to also support the application for an IFNF grant. The IFNF grant is a forest service grant which is aimed at funding a feasibility study to assess, among other things, barriers to market which are facing private stakeholders and also to assess strategies to promote private sector engagement in activities for emerging value-added forest products like torrid pellet and mass timber manufacturing. And that concludes my short presentation on Cal Forest Works, a one-page sheet on the Cal Forest Works Alliance and what its key strategies and focal points are. Were also provided to your board as attached to this agenda item.
All right, well, thank you, Scott. Yes, Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, I make a motion we appoint Steve Madron. With his vast expertise, he would be a great asset to this organization.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any comments, or we'll go to public comment? Yes, Supervisor Madron?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate the support, and you know, this is all about getting our forests working again and doing the work we need to do to not just see them all just burn up, right? So it's about working forests and working communities, so appreciate the support. I think this is going to be a great alliance.
All right, thank you. Yeah, and I see County Council Billingsley. We had a motion in a second, but there must be something we're missing here.
That's through the chair. I just wanted to ask Supervisor Bone if he wanted to include Staff Recommendations three and four as part of that motion in addition to the appointment of Supervisor Madron?
If it's okay with the secondary, yes.
Thank you, County Council Billingsley, for following up on that. All right, we do have one member of the public who does have their hand up. So we'll go to the public comment then, and I don't know if this is one of our normal, our regular speakers. So just a heads up, we have a three minutes, and at two and a half minutes, there's a thirty-second warning, and that'll tell you time is wrapping up. So when I call on zero six zero nine, which is now, just press star six to unmute, and you might already be unmuted, actually, so welcome.
Yes, hello. Thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Sherry Reckler. I work for the Regional Office for the Pacific Southwest Region of the U.S. Forest Service, and I just wanted to share that this alliance has been moving along very well, and we appreciate the support of Humboldt County and Scott Adair and his group, and so want to thank you so much for making the time for this today. Thanks again.
All right, thank you for calling in, Sherry. And that was the only hand up. So we will go back to the board. Any further conversation? Or it's like we are ready to go to a vote?
There was one more hand up.
It just popped up. Okay, thank you. Dottie popped up at the last moment. All right, if anyone else is interested, press star nine now so you don't lose your opportunity to speak. So Dottie, yes, welcome.
This is, and I just want to say that I think that Steve Madron is the perfect person to be working on this because of his background, his understanding of the forest, and being personally involved with the forest for many years, so I think that's great. I also wanted to say that as far as the funding and making this whole thing happen, I hope that Southern Humboldt will be actively involved in how things are going and the progress. I know of a young man that had many disabilities, and he was able to participate in a forestry project, and it was probably the healthiest thing in his life that he's done so far, and he's like almost thirty years old. So I support it completely, and he's had some influence on his peers as well. So, and that was really one of the main things that was helpful. He was unfortunately raised by a woman on meth and taken away from his family at a young age. So hooray for that. Let's keep it going. That's terrific, and Steve, thanks for stepping up.
All right, thank you. There are no other hands up in the attendee and the public queue, so we will go back to the board. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Through the chair, I just want to address quickly the public commenter and say that Supervisor Madron is going to be representing all of Humboldt, and I have no doubt that Southern Humboldt will be included. So just to assure the public commenter, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Bushnell. All right, no other hands up. Ryan, will you please do a roll call vote?
Yes, Chair, thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Thank you, passes four oh.
Thank you very much. Moving right along, going to the departmental item. And today's departmental item comes to us from the County Administrative Office and is regarding consideration of update and reform measures in 2022. So CIO Nielsen?
Thank you, Chair Bass. I will be turning this over to Deputy County Administrative Officer Sean Quincy to give you a presentation on the update on reform measures in 2022. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Bass, members of the board. In this post-COVID recovery environment, the county has a responsibility to continue its strong fiscal management and sustainability to maintain the services that the public and its local business community rely on. Consistent with the county's tradition, the county continues to embrace opportunities for voters to weigh in on important policies and issues affecting the future of Humboldt County and their families' futures. There are a number of update and reform issues that have been identified by staff and/or stakeholders that could warrant placing proposals on the ballot for voters to decide. At this point, staff are recommending that your board authorize the County Administrative Officer to engage with longtime county consultant Lou Edwards Group to conduct public opinion research, engage the community, and report back on the public's priorities and interests and perform other services as required, and return to your board to discuss potential next steps or opportunities in 2022. Very quickly, there are three issues that staff are recommending to explore. And those issues include transient occupancy tax reform, renewal of the abandoned vehicle abatement program, and clarity and transparency on cannabis cultivation. Regarding TOT, funding generated by the local TOT and the two percent tourism assessment is used to offset tourism impacts, and it is also distributed to various economic development and tourism agencies for marketing and other services meant to draw visitors to our area. On February ninth, after hearing a report on travel and tourism from the Visitors Bureau, your board directed staff to perform a detailed analysis of the local TOT rate and return to the board. Staff engaged stakeholders who expressed that the TOT program be reviewed for enhancements to support community, visitor, and interest-based enterprises to help ensure their continued economic viability into the future and the need for a fair, equitable levy moving forward. Regarding the vehicle abatement program, there is a one-dollar per-vehicle registration fee to be used for the removal of abandoned vehicles. And pursuant to state law, this program must be renewed every ten years by voters, and this program will sunset on April thirtieth, 2022. Prior to placing...
Through the chair. Unmute. Still on mute.
My mouse isn't working. It's hard to move the thing around here.
Hey, Sean, on that abatement item, can we up that to three dollars or four dollars? So because we're getting motorhomes at twenty-five-hundred bucks a piece and everything else, and we're always hearing it's financial, it's just, and I hate to say it, you get one car, you get two cars, and then it's filled with garbage, and I've got five in low-motor right now that I have to deal with. And I always hear that we have, you know, we have one person and trying to do... Is there a way we can actually up it to each DMV?
So Supervisor...
Can Big Lou check that out for us?
We are, the direction that we're asking to get from your board is to explore some of these issues. So those things are things that we, that staff can take a look into.
All right.
So prior to placing a measure on the ballot, a majority of the cities having a majority of the population must adopt resolutions calling for renewal of the program. Lastly, the cannabis cultivation issue, as your board is well aware, in light of the Court of Appeals' decision in Silva versus County of Humboldt, taxpayers may now submit an application for a potential full or partial refund of excise tax paid under Measure S between the years of 2017 and 2021. There still appears to be much confusion and a lack of a streamlined process to calculate tax bills. Staff recommend researching the community's interest in a measure to update, clarify, and streamline this process without raising current tax rates. At this point, staff are recommending that you authorize the CIO to execute a contract with Lou Edwards Group to explore the previously mentioned issues, solicit the vehicle abatement fee resolutions from cities, and return to your board with findings and recommendations regarding the June 2022 election. That concludes my staff report.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions for staff before we go to public comment? All right, we will go to public comment. If you're on and you wish to talk on this, press star nine. A moment, no one has pressed star nine. All right. We have one speaker. Welcome, zero one five one. Go ahead.
Hi again.
Hi again.
I was following about the two percent occupancy tax. I'm really confused and puzzled as to what happened with the two percent from the Airbnb if it's under five, under five units. And so maybe it could be clarified, and when you're reevaluating what's going on with the two percent, I personally think that if it's an occupancy of some kind, then it should be a two percent occupancy for whether it's one, whether it's five, whether it's ten. And it's really easy for Airbnb to charge that extra two percent. It's very confusing to the people paying, the people that are supposed to be collecting, and that whole thing. So I have no idea why anybody decided to do, take away the two percent for under five units, but I don't personally agree with it, and we do Airbnb. And so I'm offering to have you at least evaluate that and then charge everybody the same that are staying just overnight stays. I think that makes more sense and would generate a little bit more money. So that's one thing. And then as far as the abatement thing is concerned, one of the big problems that you have is that a lot of vehicles and RVs are not registered. If you would work with the DMV in Sacramento about how to do some kind of registration program, step it up a little bit from Sacramento so that these things could be registered, there'd be more accountability, and there'd be more that not only were registered, but were also insured. So I think particularly in unincorporated areas, this is huge, and if you could all find an agency that wants to take this on, it'd make a huge difference to our communities. Thanks.
Thank you, Dottie. All right, we'll go back to the board, and is there any further conversation or their motion of staff recommendation? Supervisor Bone, I just heard your picture came on. I guess that wasn't necessarily you raising your hand. Would someone like to make a motion? Supervisor Bushnell has her hands up.
I also, I also want to make a clarification for the abatement. The abatement is, the vehicle has to be on public land. It is not something that is going to help, I think, on private lands, and that kind of needs to be understood a little bit. Or Sean, is that something you can clarify for me?
I'm not an expert on the abandoned vehicle abatement program. Supervisor, no.
Well, my understanding is it has to be on public lands, and it can't be on private lands, which is in itself a misconception with some people. But with that, I will make a motion for staff recommendations.
Is there a second? Supervisor Madron, I think, is a second? All right. So no, seeing no other...
Second, yeah, sorry, my mute button. I was having a hard time getting my cursor to reappear.
My mouse died, so I know the feeling. All right, so we've got a motion in a second. I don't see any other hands up. Yeah, I do have the treasure tax collector who has his hand up, so welcome. Treasure tax collector Bartholomew.
Thank you very much, Chair Bass. I just wanted to mention to make sure there's no confusion about the tourism business assessment, the two percent, in that we're not talking about doing any, or the staff report is not to do anything to the assessment, the two percent assessment. That is specifically driven by the Humboldt Lodging Alliance. And so the county is not proposing to make any changes to that. It's strictly relative to the transient occupancy taxes. There are certain entities in the county now such as RV parks and campgrounds that are not being charged the ten percent TOT. And so that is one area that I think should be reviewed just because being responsible for collecting taxes here in the county, I firmly believe that everyone needs to be treated the same. And in this case, people that are visiting RV parks and campgrounds are not being treated the same as all other transients visiting Humboldt County. So I think that is a component of this proposal that should be reviewed to spread equity across the county regarding TOT. And regarding the stakeholder groups, as we are all well aware, the pandemic has affected all of our lives, but in particular, many people that were based, that are support from tourism-based activities such as the performing arts and just arts in general have really been just hammered due to COVID. And let's face it, this group has struggled really forever to survive in the economy the way it is, and the pandemic has really truly affected their ability to continue on. And so I think that is one group that should be considered for possible sharing in some of the revenue that comes from transient occupancy taxes. And that is the extent of my comments, and thank you.
All right, thank you, Supervisor Bartholomew. I'll be right with you, Rex. I did want to ask Supervisor, okay, is this a Monday? It feels like a Monday to me. Treasure tax collector Bartholomew, I have a question for you since you mentioned the HLA. My understanding is they still haven't been paid for the ending of last year, so I'm just hoping you can follow up on that. Maybe not here right now, but maybe I can connect with you later today. I just didn't want, since you brought it up, I wanted to make sure it was fresh in my mind. So be in town. Thank you. And so I had Supervisor Bushnell first had her hand up and then Supervisor Bone. I apologize.
So through the chair, I'm wondering, the HLA taxes, T-bet, correct? So is the verbiage in this document, the TOT, is it correct? Amy says yes.
Through the chair, yes, the verbiage in the staff report is correct. We are only talking about... We are only talking about, um, modifying the transient occupancy tax and not the T-bid assessment.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Supervisor Bone?
Two things. Since we're bringing up Lodging Legislatives, I did, did want to thank them again for their $2.6 million investment in the Redwood Skywalk. It would not have happened without them. Think about it, 2.6 million from that little tax. But, uh, I did want to ask for, um, Bartholomew, Supervisor Bartholomew.
Don't demote him like that.
That'll get him running out of the building. I did want to ask him, um, if we're talking equity, the Incorporated are collecting their TOT from their trailer parks, if I'm not mistaken. I know, I know a couple that are, but is it across the board? The, the Incorporated are getting their TOT, their city TOT from trailer parks?
That is my understanding, but I have not confirmed that that is the case across all incorporated cities, uh, but I believe that is correct.
I'm, I'm just saying that, that plays to the equity agreement, saying if you, if we really want to be equitable, then it should be equitable. So I, that, and I know they do, I know for a deal, I, I just know some areas do. I didn't do a, I didn't do a deep dive, but it, it would be more equitable. So thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions there? Supervisor Madron?
Uh, thank you Madam Chair. Good discussion. Appreciate staff bringing this forward. You know, at one time, not too long ago, we were also talking about the potential for a vacancy tax, uh, because, you know, all these rentals take away housing for our local folks, although many of them are starting to become 30-day and longer rentals, uh, due to the pandemic and COVID, you know, that sort of shifted some things. But I just want to make sure that we're still considering the vacancy tax. And I don't know quite where that fits in, whether it fits into this piece or not. It wasn't really mentioned here, but it was something I believe we were going to follow up on and have a discussion. The other thing is, I would love to see some of these funds go to our arts community to help support that because, you know, that's at the, the heart, both our redwoods, our cannabis, and our arts community is a huge part of what attracts people to Humboldt County to stay the night and spend this money, et cetera. So as we move forward, I just want to make sure that we, uh, keep the arts community in mind and figure out any way we might be able to help further support those efforts in our community.
Thank you Supervisor Madron. I agree with that. So do we have a motion? Is that...
Yes Chair, we do have a motion to approve.
One second, official, all right.
Yes.
No other comment? Ryan, can you please do the roll call vote?
Yes Chair, thank you. Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Thank you, passes four oh.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll move on to, um, our public hearing, which comes to us from the County Administrative Office and is consideration of the adoption of an ordinance which modifies the 2021 update of the Humboldt County Schedule of Fees and Charges. So we're going to open the public hearing, and I'd like to ask for a staff report.
Uh, Chair Bass, Neftali Rubio Mills will be delivering the staff report on the update of the Humboldt County Schedule of Fees and Charges.
And actually, I do recall County Council Billingsley saying it was not listed exactly in the right format or so. So instead of, uh, him not having to read it, he does have to read it today.
Thank you Chair. Before your board is an ordinance amending and updating the Humboldt County Schedule of Fees and Charges for permits and services of the various Humboldt County departments.
All right, thank you. So we'll turn this over to Neftali.
Thank you. Share my screen with you. Okay, great. Uh, well, good morning Chair Bass and members of the board. My name is Neftali Miller Rubio, and I am the Senior Administrative Analyst of the County Administrative Office. I come before you today to present modifications to the 2021 Schedule of Fees and Charges. The Board of Supervisors is authorized through the California State Government Code and other legislation to amend fees and charges in order to recover costs of providing a product or service. The Schedule of Fees and Charges is brought before you annually, and this year it was presented to your board in February with an effective date of March 29th. Following adoption, staff was made aware of a discrepancy in a portion of fees described under the Department of Aviation and in an attachment provided by the Agricultural Commission. This presentation will provide a brief recap of the current schedule and review the proposed modifications for both departments. This chart illustrates the overall shift in the adopted fee schedule, showing the percentage of each type of change made in 2021. As you can see, the majority, or 80% of fees didn't change. 10% of fees increased, 3% of fees have been reduced, 5% of fees were new to the schedule this year, and 2% of fees were deleted. This slide is a repeat from the presentation made in February, and I'm showing this to demonstrate that with the modifications proposed today, these percentages have not changed. Getting into the modifications themselves, those proposed for the Department of Aviation include 14 hangar fees at three airports. 11 fees at Murrayfield were posted, uh, with incorrect rates. To address this discrepancy, the Department of Aviation has been charging customers the lower of the two rates available, and will continue to do so until the modifications become available in mid-July. At Garber, Garberville Airport, two fees have been split into four categories, and one fee at Ronerville Airport was divided into three categories. Both of these changes were made to mirror naming and pricing shifts that followed a rate study done at the department. Moving on to the Agricultural Commission, fees for this department were shown accurately in our previous presentation. However, details included in a departmental attachment known as Schedule A did have two errors. Specifically, we updated government codes which grant fee authority for various weighing devices. Additionally, one local device fee was modified to show the correct calculation. However, these changes are purely clerical and do not result in any rate changes. Just as a brief recap, the proposed modifications include 14 fees under the Aviation Enterprise Fund and Schedule A for the Agricultural Commission. Should you approve the proposed modification today, they will be made effective on July 19th, 2021. And with that, I thank you for your time and welcome any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on that? Supervisor Bone?
And I, this is going to go towards our Aviation Director Cody. And I know, and a short explanation, because this has been a little hot button issue of why we're raising these fees, because it opens the doors and gives us more money for F, we, we have to do this by law and everything else. But with this, I need a, we need a commitment to the, uh, our aviation community, because if they were living in these, some of these hangars, they would be considered substandard. And I, and I, and I think they've been very patient, and I appreciate Director Rogatz because he's been all over it. He goes to meetings when he knows people aren't happy, and he's doing a great job on that. But I would just like to reiterate, or have you reiterate more than anything else, the commitment that you've made to bringing these, uh, hangars up to standards in the next two to three years, especially with the, with the increased funding that you expect that we have, by law, that we have to readjust our rates.
Yeah, through the chair. Thank you Rex, Cody Rogatz with the Department of Aviation. The fees that we're bringing forward today, um, as Neftali highlighted, is, um, mostly corrections from clerical errors on what we presented before. And for that, I apologize. It's, uh, a very vast undertaking that we did here in, in making these changes, uh, with the 100-plus hangars that we have across the four of our six airports where we have hangars. As far as what you're talking about with federal funding, moving forward, um, we're preparing a board item, hopefully to bring before you next week, um, for this current year, um, with over $2 million in federal funds. And the majority of that funding, um, will be dedicated to a system-wide study where we'll be looking at our hangar infrastructure and starting the process to develop plans on how we improve those moving forward. We currently have 117 hangars at the four airports, um, where we have hangars, those being at the ACB Airport in McKinleville, Murrayfields in Eureka, Ronerville Airport just outside of Fortuna, and the Garberville Airport. Of those 117 hangars, only 17 of those hangars have been constructed or, or had major modifications in the last 10 years. The majority of our hangar infrastructure is dilapidated or, or severely aged and, and showing that. But we're working with the FAA, um, and working with the local general aviation community to develop those plans to address, uh, that lacking infrastructure moving forward.
Thanks Cody, that's, I just think they need to hear that more often, that, that we're moving forward, and if you can keep them informed, it might stop our phone from ringing a little bit as much.
Thank you.
I'd rather your phone ring. Thanks Cody.
Thank you Supervisor, uh, excuse me Supervisor Bone.
I wanted to thank, um, thank you Supervisor Bone for bringing up, um, Cody's willingness to go out and meet with a lot of people who sometimes are not really happy to have that conversation. So, um, I think it's really helpful, and I do appreciate that effort, Director Rogatz. Supervisor Madron, did you, I saw a hand move, did you?
Yeah, I would, uh, move, uh, staff recommendation.
Well, can we have a second, then we'll go to the public comment portion? Supervisor Bushnell?
Um, I, I would check it, but I also, um, have a question for Cody if I could.
Okay, so we have a motion that's, I think, been seconded. Yes, definitely, go ahead.
Um, through the chair, good morning. Um, I just wanted to, um, inquire, there's been some talk with the Garberville, um, airports and the repairs that need to be done to the fuel, uh, um, uh, swiper thing down there. I just want to make sure that, that, you know, with fees, with this coming to light today, it's going to be a question that I'm getting, so I just want to address it.
Yeah, um, I would just check in with County Council before I answer that to make sure I'm allowed to, to discuss that as a part of this item.
How about if I could just change my verbiage and say, are we working on that?
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks Cody, I appreciate that.
Thank you Supervisor Bushnell.
All right, so we will go out to the public. There's no hands up. If you wish to comment, press star nine. And wait a few seconds here. All right, I see no hand ups, and we'll go back to the board. Um, we do have a motion that's been seconded. We closed the public comment portion of this. If there's any further conversation, let's have it now, or if not, um, let me, uh, ask Ryan for a roll call vote. Ryan, it looks like we're due for a vote.
Yes Chair, thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Thank you, passes four oh.
All right, thank you. And so we'll now close that public hearing. And I'm not sure if this is the record or not, but we'll wait and see what happens in closed session, I guess. But, uh, County Council Billingsley, um, it looks like we're heading into closed section, session next. Do you provide us a little detail?
Thank you Chair.
And about how long, how long do you think this might last as well, please?
Sure. Uh, it's the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1 to discuss existing litigation, the case of Rutherford versus County of Humboldt, case number 121CB02750RMI. I would estimate 15 minutes.
Right. Wow, all right, well, let's, so I go out to public comment. Is there anyone who cares to comment on this item? Does not appear to be so. So, uh, back to the board. Let's go straight into the other room, and hopefully we'll be back here about 10 o'clock to report out. All right. County Council Billingsley, maybe we have a report out of closed session?
Thank you Chair. The board voted four to zero with Supervisor Wilson absent to authorize the risk manager to enter into an agreement with the Mitchell Brissot Firm to assist the Office of County Council in this matter.
All right, thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.